Just sort of, it's nine oh six, and we'll start the meeting. I want the meeting to be fairly quick because I'm really conscious of the fact that it's nine a.m. this morning, and we all need to get some things done. Keep it short if we can. So what I'm proposing to do is if you read this report that Tom prepared and sent us, I just printed it out, it gives us the resolution that Tom is proposing, as well as some background and some analysis that he has prepared in conjunction with, I believe, the Roads Department in Clearview Township. So, as Tom isn't here, we'll begin, but I would like all of us, in a way, this is how I'd like to run the meeting. We all go around the circle, so to speak, and everybody gets a couple of minutes to sort of give us your opinion, whether it's for or against, and why you think it's a good idea or not a good idea, or what you would propose to change, if you could change the resolution, or, you know, therefore. So, so if that's okay, and then, once everybody's had a chance to kind of go around, and we'll try not to interrupt everyone, then what we're gonna do is, you'll get another 30 seconds. So if somebody says something that you want to say, "I really agree with that," or "I really don't agree with that," or whatever, I'll give you another 30 seconds to sort of state your final comment, or whatever. And then I'm hoping that we'll vote, whether we vote on this document here, the resolution as it is, or whether there's any amendments, we will take a vote. And, and then that will be, and then we will close the meeting after that. Is everybody okay with that, as terms of an agenda and the way we, the process we're going forward with? Shaking heads? Okay.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna start out by reading the resolution as, as Tom isn't here yet. Did somebody just log in? No? Okay.
Lori, do you want to just go through the agenda real quick, so that we can just approve the agenda and the disclosure of pecuniary interests?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had to do that. Okay, yes. So the agenda, I don't have it in front of me, Kayla.
I have it in front of me, if you'd like me to read it, I've got it right in front of me. So, oh, sorry, no, it's going by.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt already. Kayla, can you send, resend Tom the Zoom request? He's trying, he just sent me a text and he's trying to, to get logged on here. So he was wondering if Kayla could resend it to him. Sorry. Okay, go, carry on. Sorry, Lori.
No worries.
To interrupt.
No, it's important that he's here.
So, shall I read the agenda then?
Sure.
So, on today's agenda, we are just going to be looking at the recommendation as made by Tom. Be it resolved that the Creemore Business Improvement Area Management Board hereby approves a special meeting. So I guess we have to approve this special meeting first, dated July 17, 2020, as presented. And then disclosure of pecuniary interests, the street painting, and our next meeting, those are the items that are currently sitting on this agenda.
Perfect, thank you, Sarah. Okay, I appreciate that. While you were reading it, I was able to pull it up myself. So, do we have an approval of agenda? Which is, be it resolved that the Creemore Business Improvement Area, BIA, hereby approves the special meeting, dated July 17. So, all in favor? Okay, everyone, and so motion is carried. Thank you for approving that. Okay, so let's move forward. And the next item on the agenda is obviously the, oh, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Sorry, I skipped that. Is there any interest, raise your hand if you have any pecuniary or conflict of interest? Okay, no? So, next thing, we're gonna hop right into the street painting. I will read the, I will read the motion as Tom has prepared it for us. Be it resolved that the BIA is in support of encouraging cyclists in the South Georgian Bay area to choose Creemore, and specifically Mill Street, as a cycling destination. As one means to an end, the BIA approves that on-street cycle parking area, 2.4 meters by 9.1 meters, be painted in the same area that the existing three-bike racks currently occupy in front of Affairs Cafe. This will better, this will, this will better delineate the area currently being used by the cafe since 2018. Okay, so that's the, the motion as it stands on the table, that Tom has put forward. And so, who would like to begin? Do we have any takers, or shall I just choose somebody? Heather, would you like to begin? Okay, so Heather, I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes. We'll try to keep it brief, but I'd love to know your opinion, and then give us your, your ideas.
Okay, so I for sure support the attraction of cyclists to Creemore. Creemore Springs is also one of the stops that are highlighted by Psycho Simco, and also benefits from the cyclists. Regarding the parking spaces, a few comments is, I like it, I love it. I think it's great that we can help the cyclists park and stay. I think that there needs, what's missing in that proposal is signage. I think with painted lines, obviously, people are still parking in the yellow painted lines. So, we need to have signage that's exactly saying what these green lines are for, because I've never actually seen the green lines on a road. Another idea that I thought was, already we're limited with parking in Creemore. Is there the opportunity to limit the timing for that parking? Because we don't really see cyclists after noon, I don't know if it's, and are we, could we share the time for other people? Because, let's say it's four o'clock, we don't usually see cyclists, and it's Thursday, and the pub people are parked all over the place. So is it an 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. time slot? Like, like when you see parking in the city, you can only park for three hours, or whatever. I don't know, but whatever that looks like, I do think that there has to be signage. My thought is, we could share the spaces, that's just a thought. And then another thought was, can we just make it two full spaces instead of one and a half? It's already a useless space.
Sorry, I'm right, I'm making comments.
So I think that was the idea of not giving a full four-hour space, and signage, I think, would need to go along with that painted space.
So you're in favor of the painted spaces with the following amendments of including appropriate signage, and questioning that the timing, is that what I understand?
Yeah, 100% appropriate signage, I think, needs to go with it. And then my idea of sharing with that, I wouldn't not vote if it wasn't a shared space.
Okay. Okay, Doug, can I, can I ask, is Tom on the phone before we just keep going? No? No, Tom?
No, not that I know of, unless he's, unless he's come on with, without me knowing, I don't see him there at all. But he just texted me and he, he said he was trying to get in on Zoom, but he can't, so.
That might be Tom.
Hello?
Hi, Tom, thanks for joining us, Lori.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, all right. No, I was having, all right, who bothered with the mechanics later? Sorry, I'm late.
No worries, I appreciate you joining us, I know you're on the road, about to start your vacation, so thank you for joining in.
Yeah, so just so we know, if it, if it really starts to become, does everyone, have you, if anyone?
Everybody has the report, and I believe everybody's had a chance to read it over. And what we've done is, we've just started the meeting, and what we're doing is, we're going around to all the board members that are currently on the call, and asking them for their opinion, whether they support or don't support, and if they have any changes or amendments they'd like to propose. And, and then we're gonna go around, give everybody a couple of minutes to, to check in with us. And then we're going to put the resolution to a vote, whether it's this resolution or an amended version.
Okay, that's great. Can I just know who's in the meeting?
Oh, sorry, yeah, of course you can't see that. So it's Doug McKecky, and Sarah Hershaw, Heather Harding, myself, and Kayla is here. So we have, wait a minute, did we just lose?
We lost Nancy.
Nancy's here, she's also in her car. So we do have quorum.
Good morning, all. Thank you for the meeting.
No problem.
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you. Okay, so what we've done is, we've read your resolution. Heather just had a few comments. She's felt that, that she likes the idea of having bike parking areas, but the, that it's missing a proposal for signage in the resolution, and that it also misses a proposal for limiting the time of the actual bike parking. So whether it's from 8:00 to 1:00, or 9:00 to 3:00, or whatever the parking times are, so that other businesses can use that spot when the bikes are not there. I think that Sarah might summed up your comments appropriately.
Okay, so if I hear that, she says she's fine with the delineating the zone, but we should indicate to the public when they can park on the green.
I believe that's what Heather was saying, right?
So that, that helps solve one of the, one of the concerns we had, because one of the things we didn't want to do is put any prints or things on the green. It's like that it's a, it's a permanent parking zone, no parking. We didn't want to indicate in any way that there's no parking. So, your, I like your suggestion, it just indicates that it's, this is when it's a bike zone.
Tom, if you don't mind, what we'll do is, we'll continue going around the circle. I'd like to, I'd like to get everyone's opinion. I don't want this meeting to be really long, because I'm very conscious that everybody here is running their business this morning, and you're on your vacation. So I want to make sure that we capture everybody's thoughts, and then we're gonna go to a vote. And before we capture everyone's thoughts, I'll give you a chance to also answer any questions or concerns people had, once we finish going around the circle. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I just, I just put it in here, so.
Let me know if you, if you have any trouble hearing again. Okay, so Sarah, if you'd like, or I forget who I said was next. Sarah, would you like to sort of kick off the next couple of minutes and give us your opinions?
I agree very much with Heather in terms of some of the other needs in, in implementing this. Making sure that there's appropriate signage, because people do completely ignore painting. I also think it's important that the space makes it clear that we are supporting cyclists. And I would recommend that in the painting, we kind of maybe could organize to have one of those big stencils of a bike or something there, so that it really shows how bike-friendly we are, even when the bikes aren't sitting there. That might kind of speak to some of it, otherwise, this looks like a big green blob, and it might be confusing to some people.
That we, sorry to interrupt, it does say, you may not have read all the details, but it does say that there will be a stencil of a bike.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
I think it said, I read it here somewhere.
I did, I did too.
Oh, I don't think I, I read the report in its entirety, I think I just read the resolution, I apologize.
I pictured it like a wheelchair, like a-
Oh, perfect, excellent, sorry. Okay, I apologize for not seeing the piece. Okay, well, that's, I think that and the signage, like Heather said, and it's great. I also think it's important, though, going forward, that something like this, we have an understanding of the process, and what that looks like next time, so that we're not in a pickle, and so that we can serve our members better. And, so I hope that we can maybe address that at another meeting. But generally, yeah, I think this is a nice initiative. Norma, this is a great thing to do for cyclists, and it really helps with one of the issues that we've had on the main street.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Doug McKecky, would you like to continue? Did you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, I don't have any comments. I'm just going to listen to your comments, and I'll support whatever resolution you come up with, you know. So, you know, I, I had not thought about the fact that, yeah, the cyclists only use it, I guess, in the morning on a Saturday and Sunday, so, you know, you don't, you want to make it clear that it is, that there is a time limit there, assigned, assigned with a time limit, so. But no, carry on, I'm, I'm in full agreement with what's been said so far, so.
Okay. I believe we've lost Nancy, I'm just gonna check my phone to see if she's texted me, I know she was driving.
Can you maybe call her, and-
Yeah, I'm wondering if I-
Turn on speaker, maybe?
Let me see if I can call her.
I don't know if that counts, Kayla.
Does that count, Kayla, if we can pull her in, if I-
It'd be best to have her as a participant or panelist.
Okay, so it went to, it went to voicemail, so I fear that she's probably in a zone where maybe she has no coverage. And, as we all know, that, that happens. Well, I'll go next then, since, since we're waiting for Nancy to join back in with her, her interruption of the call. I, I agree with, I think, what Heather and Sarah are saying. I think it's a really good idea to support cycling in town. I think that this is something, from a marketing perspective, and certainly from a community perspective, we want to encourage, is bike bicycling. And as a mode of transportation, we want to be the town that is sustainable, that offers, you know, not just cars, but also bicycles, a comfortable place to park. I also like the idea that it helps with safety, because I understand there's some problems with people double parking. Hi Nancy, thanks for coming back. I understand that there's some problems with people double parking, and then maybe there's some safety for cyclists, so this would help with the safety. I agree 100% with Heather and Sarah about signage, and possibly limiting the times, you know, saying from 9:00 to 1:00, or 9:00 to 3:00, or whatever it is. My one concern is, and because of the way we're doing this, I really feel like, A, the process isn't quite right, because we don't have a parking plan. But also, we're gonna put this green space out there, and we don't have any permanent structure for bikes. So my concern is, is that if we're gonna put a green space, then I think the township needs to decide whether there's a semi-permanent seasonal structure that we put out there for bikes. Because if you look at it from a customer perspective, sorry, excuse me, people are coming in, but Norma's closed on Monday. So she doesn't put her bike racks out on Monday. So come on into Creemore, we've got wonderful bike parking, ooh, but not on Monday. So, you know, I sort of feel like, if we're gonna go through with this, I think the next phase, and this is where I'd like to amend the, the resolution as well, is that we have to consider a semi-permanent bike structure there, if that's what we want to do. If we're serious about bike parking, and we're serious about providing this to our visitors that come into town as part of our new initiatives, then we need to not just have it dependent on one business. If Norma decides to close Monday to Wednesday, because that's what her business, you know, works with, then what? We don't have a bike, that we don't have bike racks for Monday to Wednesday? You know, I'm just giving that as a devil's advocate, but I, I just see that that could be a problem, because we're dependent on a business. If these are the types of bike racks, Norma's invested in them, and that's why I want to support her, because I think we need to support any business that's doing something. You know, she's, she's doing some great things, there's a video that's gonna happen next week, she told me, from, I don't know if it's Ontario Cycle.
On the 21st.
Yeah, okay, Ontario Cycle is coming to do a video about how bike-friendly Creemore is. I mean, these are wonderful initiatives, there's a wonderful marketing initiatives. I think this is what we want to be seen as. But I also think, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna approve the bike-painting lines, but with my amendment would be to propose that, that council, or not council, sorry, that the Roads Department or Public Works considers by 2021 in April that there's a semi-permanent seasonal bike structure on the road there, in the, within the green square that Tom's proposing. Because having a green square and no bike racks, to me, is kind of ridiculous. So that is my two cents. I will be voting to approve it, but with that, with that amendment. So, Nancy? Sorry, yeah, sorry, Heather, you had to just comment?
I just have comments on your comments there. And the reality is, the cyclists that come into Creemore, they're only going to park in front of the business that they're visiting.
True.
But they're not going to park at Norma's and go to Erwin 142, or the brewery. There's no chance of it, they want to be in direct sightline. So, where, the permanent place is gonna have to go to the business who's gonna profit from cyclists the most, which I think we're in agreeance. It is Affairs, because they do, they, I don't know why, but like, maybe, I don't know why it's not Nancy's, but they do come to the brewery as well, but there's a lot of more space to lean them up against the wall. We just gotta think about that, that they're only going to park in front of the destination.
I agree, but shouldn't we look at if we're going to be a sustainable type of village, that we encourage bikes, not just the touring bikes that come in from Collingwood every day, but just bikes in general? You know, do we need a bike parking area? I don't, I agree with you, and, and whether there's-
In addition, in addition to the green space?
No, within the green space. Because I just think, having a green space and not having a, a permanent bike rack is, is just kind of silly.
And I don't think cyclists, they don't share with other mountain bikes, I don't think.
Okay.
It's a thing.
Okay, okay, well, that's maybe something I just don't understand then. Okay, so I'm gonna move on.
Or Sarah's gotta come in.
If I can just comment on this, I think you're both really right. So, and I wonder if in the process, we could do something where there is an application, where others could have the exact same thing happen, if they want to provide their racks, or that we would partner, like Heather's right, like, nobody's gonna use those racks if they're not going into Norma's and buying a butter tart. So, but maybe that's where like partnerships, like 50/50 purchasing, or something like that, and a two- or three-year commitment, I don't know. I think that that might be, we could maybe find a process for that. But you're, you're right, like, maybe not the high-end cyclists, maybe we can't serve all of them, but we could maybe serve our local cyclists with other kind of bike parking areas, that would really continue the messaging when Norma's not around. Like, at the brewery, at, at other locations. I, I'm assuming in the village, there might be some stuff there too for bikes. But, anyway, you're both so right, it's a hard one to figure out what to do with.
Hmm, exactly.
Can I say something?
Nancy, yes, please, you've got the floor.
Sorry, I'm, I'm in my car, and my car keeps telling me I have to pull over, but I have, I can't. So, I agree with, with Heather and everyone else's comments. I personally do not want bike racks in front of my, my place. I think there will be bike racks in the, in the-
Village Green. You got it. I think, I think she's all right with this.
You're losing, we're losing. Nancy, do you hear me?
But I think it's a really good, I think, are good, I think Lori's point is that the township should do them, because we're encouraging people to park on town in my car. I can hear you.
Okay.
I agree with Heather.
Does this count?
I heard her say, "I agree with Heather," so I'm assuming she agrees with the, the signage and some of the other ideas?
And she's not against them being at Norma's and not at her place, because she-
Timeline, and permanent structure.
I'm so sorry, Nancy, but most of what you've just said in the last 30 seconds was- Do, do you hear me, Nancy? The last just was completely out, we couldn't, yeah.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, one second, let me pull over. Okay, so I think that Heather is right, we need to have a timeline, like from-
Awesome.
Eight o'clock in the morning to 1:00 at night. And I think maybe Norma could put out some cones or something, so people can see that there is a limited parking there, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I think some kind of signage, that it's only 8:00 to 1:00. I mean, I think Norma will be able to give us a better time of what was the busiest time, that makes sense to me, like 8:00 to 1:00. But they need to have some kind of indicator, maybe on the road, like maybe cones or something that she puts out every morning. And if she's not open, then the cones aren't there. And I think the township should actually do a permanent structure, so she's not always pulling them out, or whatever. And I think the station on, the station on the greens, the village green, they're actually putting in some bike racks there next summer, so. And I'm fine, I don't want the cyclists coming in to my place.
So, so you, so you are in favor of painting the green, the green lines?
Yes, with signage.
Okay.
When, and when she's not open, then something's gotta get, indicate that they need to park there.
What I'm hearing from everybody is that I think, if I could summarize, is that we're going, we're all sort of in agreement that the green lines painting idea is a good one. However, we would like to amend the resolution to include some signage, which, which includes sort of a timeframe of when the bike parking is. And again, we might have to follow MTO laws or rules, or however that, that works. And the sign would be a semi-permanent sign, that we just sort of, that maybe she puts out in the morning and takes in at night, is that sort of what works?
I think so.
Tom, I'm gonna give you the last couple of minutes, if you want to have any sort of final thoughts, or if you want to answer any of the, the questions people have.
No, I think it's great, I, I really appreciate it. It, it's, let's, let's get this one piece of the parking done. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the comment I figured with Sarah, that it would have been nice to do this as a comprehensive review of all the parking. But I can assure you that we're gonna be able to do that. Dan and I are working on a number of things, including some off Mill Street parking, and lots of time to talk about that. So I really appreciate the ideas, the ideas of the timeline, and updates for Norma, and all those things, that how can we use the green space better? So, I'm, I'm with you there, and I, I would accept, of course, an amendment, all, all those amendments that you talked about, I think was the only one, primarily was the sign. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
And, and, and for me, on behalf of Affairs, Norma, she acted, she was, I, I understand she was-
I, I had a hard time hearing the last, last 30 seconds there, Tom, I don't know if anyone else had a hard time, I'll turn up my volume.
Hello?
Yeah, hi, Tom, we can hear you, but it's sort of a little bit cut up. Could, could you just sort of summarize your last comment there?
All I said was, thank you on behalf of Norma. She wanted me to express her thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, great. Okay, great, so I, I want to move this along. So, guys, let's look at the resolution and the text that's there, if you have it in front of you, if not, I can read it again. I don't exactly know how to write an amendment here on the, on the call, but maybe Kayla can sort of give me a hand here. Be it resolved that the BIA is in support of encouraging cyclists in the South Georgian Bay area to choose Creemore, and specifically Mill Street, as a cycling destination. As one means to that end, the BIA approves that on-street cycle parking area, 2.4 meters by 9.1 meters, be painted in the same area that the existing three-bike racks currently occupy in front of Affairs Cafe. This will better delineate the area currently being used by the cafe since 2018. I think we'd also like to say, with the provision, I'm just gonna sort of try to write this, I'm not very good at this, right, with the provision, that signage lines are provided by the township? What should I say? Or BIA?
Township.
By the township, I don't know, because it might be a, we might have to check with MTO-type rules, right? By the township that communicate bike parking time zones? Is this, is this right, Heather?
Well, I don't know, worded, right? We'd like to see time, yeah, time restriction.
Oh, I have blah, 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 his resolution, with the provision of signage and parking limits, signage, parking limits, and bike racks to be provided by the township.
I don't think bike racks are something that they're going to be able to provide. My idea was that, sort of by next year, we look at sort of a semi-permanent structure. But, but as, I understand what you guys are saying too, that it's only for that business, so perhaps that's not doable, to have bike racks. Doug, do you?
Because it will- So, I, I don't, I think that's a reasonable thing to ask, and I, Dan and I are certainly thinking about it.
Okay, okay, thanks, Tom. Doug, did you have a comment as well?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, it's fine to put that, that extra in there, the signage and the semi-permanent structure, and, and such being provided by the township. I think you can only ask that the township do that, and then, you know, and then Tom and I, in the next budget and everything, will, or Tom will deal with Dan and, and myself in the budget, will, will ask for it. But I think the main thing is, get this green patch in there for now. You know, it'd be nice if they could, you know, have a, while they're doing the green patch, maybe, you know, paint a bicycle on, on there as well. For the, for the semi-permanent bike racks and everything. But that's something that has to be dealt with, you know, later, with the township. So, the main thing is to get the green patch there.
In order to facilitate the signage immediately, which I think is kind of important, maybe that is something that the BIA can step up and help Norma with. I do think it's important, and I think from a marketing perspective, if we can put the BIA information on there, we might be also able to- Yeah, or we might be able to work with Norma to modify the existing racks, so that there are tall things, so that they can be seen, you know, that there's like extensions, and the signage goes out there. So when those are out there, that's when you park. And then I don't know how you would do it the rest of the time, but that might be a quick fix that we could do fairly affordably.
Okay, so let's say that with the provision that signs are provided- Okay, so let's say that with the provision that signs are provided, uh, by the BIA, um, that communicate the zone and parking times. I don't know if that's something that we really are concerned about, that we can do immediately, along with the green square. I'm looking to see Heather and Sarah, what do you, I'm just trying to figure out what I can write here, so that we can vote.
We could also request, see as though it is of greatest benefit to Norma, we could also request that that's something that she does in order to put out her temporary items. Like when they're, you know, that might be something, um, Tom's been talking to her in general, so I don't know. Tom, do you have any ideas as to, to that? But maybe we just put provisions for signage and not worry about the money, and we can figure that out later.
I, I see. Then we'll make provisions to put the racks on, uh, when. It was made, well, uh, will they, will they leave their bikes and, and go down to, uh, the other half of the street, so. We can work with Norma.
I'm sorry, Tom, we haven't been able to hear what you were saying. Um, I think you, you sort of cut out after you said that we should do.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, it's better, yeah, please go ahead.
I'm just saying, I like the idea of the sign, and, and that's a pretty straightforward thing, uh, and it would be nice to have it right away, because it would, uh, explain the implementation of the whole thing. So whether it's the township or the BIA or Norma, I, I, I think it, I thought to Carrie about that and Amanda, uh, first, I like the idea, and it's promotion, it's something we can do. Uh, in terms of the use of the, the racks when Norma's, uh, not open, I, I think we should be able to work that out. Uh, and, uh, and then the semi-permanent structure, I think, as Doug said, I think that's something that, uh, we, we should consider for, as part of the overall planning, and that I would say that it's probably something we would do next year, 2021, but I, I support that as well.
Okay, so then, in this, um, in this, I, I'd like to put some of these provisions into the, the, um, into the, uh, motion, because I feel that the BIA is sort of approving the green square, or the green painted square, with, you know, with the idea that these things are gonna happen. And we understand that the semi-permanent structure likely won't happen this year, and I appreciate that. But I think it's something that we want to put in there, so that we can say that, you know, we have thought this through. Okay, so let's say with the provision that signs are created immediately, and future semi-permanent structures are considered by township? Does that, it gives some room for people to have some discussion in the next few months about what this is gonna look like, and, and what the kinds of structures, whether we need one or not, but I think it just shows that the BIA sees that this is the future. Um, are we okay with that? Kayla, are you clear on what I just said?
Yeah, I've got, uh, Tom's resolution with the provision of signage created immediately, uh, and future implementation of semi-permanent seasonal structures.
That sounds good. We, I'm seeing everybody nod.
Yes.
We've lost Nancy, I think, if, if anyone else have any other amendments they'd like to make to the resolution, okay, everyone.
I think it was covered.
Great, thank you. So I think we're ready to.
The, and, and that's fine, I, I'm, I'm happy with the, with those amendments. The only question that I have is that, uh, you're saying signage to be, uh, you know, uh, done immediately, uh, but if the township goes ahead and does the signage and puts it up, and then, you know, you guys say, well, hold a second, this is not exactly what we wanted, so I think, uh, are you going to give some direction to the township as to what you want the signs to say?
Yes, yes.
Okay, right.
I think so, and I, in fact, it might be a, a, just a, again, just a, a street sign, an A-frame, or something that goes out during the day, comes in at night. Maybe Norma's responsible for bringing in and out when the bike racks are out, so there's a clear understanding of what, what this area is being used for.
Okay, well, actually, an A-frame would be great, I think that would be a super idea, yeah.
I think that's what we're thinking, and if the township doesn't provide it, then I think Sarah was suggesting the BIA will.
Okay.
But I'm leaving it open, because I think it's open for discussion, and this leaves us some leeway into whether the town or the BIA. And again, this might be a, an MTO issue as well, so this is why we, we just put it out there, but these are recommendations. Okay, so Nancy's back, so if possible, I would like to take this to a vote now, with the amendment that Kayla just proposed. So if you guys are ready to vote, I'd like to say, um, do I need to read it all again, Kayla, or are we good to just say all in favor?
Oh, I'm not muted. Uh, do you want me to give it a quick read, so everybody hears it as it will be in the minutes?
Okay, perfect, yes.
So it'll be as moved by and seconded by whomever, that the BIA is in support of encouraging cyclists in the South Georgian Bay Area to choose Creemore and specifically Mill Street as a cycling destination. As one means to that end, the BIA approves that on-street cycle parking area of 2.4 meters by 9.1 meters be painted in the same area that the existing three-bike racks currently occupy in front of Affairs Cafe, with the provision of signage created immediately to communicate zone and parking limits and provide, and providing future semi-permanent seasonal structures.
Okay, so can I ask, all in favor, please raise your hand? Okay, so there's one, two, three, four.
You mean unanimous? Do you need a motion and a seconder, like a firster and a seconder?
Yes, please. So I hear Doug has got his hand up for making the motion, and do we have a second or, or Heather?
Nancy.
Okay, Nancy, great, and, uh, I believe I saw everybody's hand as unanimous, that we are, the motion, so I would say the motion is carried. Thanks so much, everyone, for.
Thank you.
The emergency meeting, I can play faster. Bye, take care, I'm gonna close the meeting now, and I appreciate your comments. Tom, did you have any further comments?
No, I'm great, thank you so much, all.
Okay, well, yep, he's sort of in.
Motion to adjourn? Yeah, I, I put Nancy as she left first, is the motion to adjourn at 9:42. Okay, hi, guys, have a good day.
You guys too, take care, see you again, bye now.
Bye.